The time has come for our Monday, May 20th, 2019, regular city council meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman Bolton. Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Moseo.
Here.
Alderman Kirk.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Taylor. Mayor Cunningham.
Present. Alright, next we're going to be led in invocation by Bobo Diablo of the Islamic Foundation North and immediately Father Ned Abi Heather will be leading us in the pledge. I'm sorry Hannah will be leading us in the pledge. Sir, all rise.
I greet you all with a greeting of peace. I will start the invocation in the classical Arabic of the 7th century and then I will have the translation in the English. I beseech the Lord Creator of the heavens and the earth and everything in between them, seen and unseen, all-knowing, all-wise, the bestower of knowledge and wisdom, to guide the members of this council in their decision-making process, to unite them in a common goal, to serve the best interests of the citizens of Waukegan, to hold a healthy debate without ill feelings, to respect one another in doing so, to listen to the other, and to be united, to all be united behind the final outcome of the decision-making process, though such decisions may be contrary to one's own. I ask the Lord Creator to grant them all the insight of King David, peace be upon him, the wisdom of King Solomon, peace be upon him, and the patience in adversity of Prophet Joe, peace be upon him. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I tell you, didn't she, she did lead, didn't she? Thank you. Thank you, Miss. Yeah, give it to her. Her little voice echoed out of all of us, didn't it? With no mic, that's right. Alright, I'm gonna go with a few mayor's comments. So Smart, Waukegan received an award at Aragon National Laboratory in Lamont for earning the highly coveted So Smart Gold Designation. To achieve gold, the highest designation, Waukegan earned at least 200 points for adopting solar best practices across eight categories of strategic So Smart activities. We updated zoning codes, committed to process rooftop solar permits in three business days or less, or our staff received, and our staff received hands-on training of best practices for permitting and inspecting solar systems. And this is what we received. So, mic is gonna come up and this will be placed, this is gonna be placed at the elevator as you, so everyone can sit there or by the wall where the Aldemans and city staff is at. So congratulations to staff for really putting a lot of time into this. And I'm gonna brag a little bit, we were the number one, we were the gold one in the county of Lake. We beat out some very, you know, cities that you would think probably would let's out and when it comes to these type of designations. So kudos to staff and the hard work they went into. Congratulations, celebrating their 40th anniversary under the Patterson family in over 75 years as a staple of Waukegan. Look, it's Louis', we all know Louis', Louis' Pizza is the technical name, right? Right David?
Right.
Louis' on North Avenue?
Oh yeah.
Now, see, there it is now. Yeah, 40 years, 40 years of service, they have been providing that awesome chicken. Oh, delicious pizza and a host of other things, but 75 years as a staple of Waukegan. So congratulations, let's give it up to them. Alright, upcoming events, join us for our Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony Monday, May 27th. The parade will start at 10:30 a.m. at the corner of Genesee in Washington and will travel west to Veterans Memorial Plaza where the ceremony will take place at 11:00 a.m. All are welcome. And David, we are especially sending a shout-out or asking, here's David, we're asking some of our...
Mayor, we're asking for all veterans to come and join us at 10:30.
There it is. Jane, I'm sorry Jane. Alright, so all veterans, we're asking for you to come out. Alright, and I think David, special war war, is it Vietnam and...
We're celebrating the 75th anniversary of the D-Day landings, so that's a World War II effort, so we'd love to see World War II veterans come and be part of the ceremony and be ready.
Please, thank you. Alright, 10:45. Alright, Genesee Theater has another sold-out show this Friday, May 24th, with Mr. Steve Martin and Mr. Martin Short when they take the stage. Limited tickets are available for the Christ Angel Raw Show Friday, May 31st. Three Brothers Theater presents the hilarious Noises Off this Friday, Saturday, 7:30 p.m. Performances run through June the 8th and tickets are selling fast. The Waukegan Park District, Delaune Wine Fest, Wine Fine Arts Festival is Saturday, June 1st and is always a touchstone for the start of the summer season. This year, free event runs from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Bowen Park. Alright, we had normally, we had events of presentations, we're gonna ask everybody to be somewhat patient with us because we thought, we think these are, when we know these are very, very important. To start off, we're gonna do, we're gonna ask Waukegan Community Bank to step up. Jack, where you at, Jack? Alright, come on up, Jack, that's going to come up and speak about some great economic development coming to the city of Waukegan. And the reason we're asking them to come, oh, how you doing? David Lee?
Right.
Oh. So they're gonna show us some great news for those who need a community bank. So come on up. Alright, thank you. Jack, and David.
For starters, Mayor, as I told you a few moments ago, since I saw you last, half of my face is frozen. So, I had a medical situation a few days ago and the right half of my mouth doesn't work so well, so if it sounds like I have a mouthful of marbles, it feels like that too. Dave Lee and I didn't go out for a couple glasses of wine before we came here, so anyway. But good evening and we're really happy to be here. I'm here as a representative of Lake Forest Bank and Trust's Board of Directors. David Lee is the president and CEO of the bank and Kathy Walker is going to be the president of what we're gonna show you now. Mayor, in 2017, when you were elected, shortly after you were elected, you came to Lake Forest Bank and Trust and visited with us and you wanted to tell us about your vision of Waukegan. And fortunately, I had known you a few years before that when we worked on the Crystal Ray project and you were a great supporter of that and you gave us good guidance, you were hard on us, but you gave us good guidance and we got it done. But we really liked what we heard, we were really impressed with your passion for the community and we thought that initiatives that you were describing really made a lot of sense. And one of the things that you had told us was that you wanted to, you wanted to bring new investment to the community. You were focused, at least in our discussion, on the corridors that come from the highway into the downtown area to help generate more traffic and more activity in the downtown area and enhance the corridors. And you said, "I want you guys to think about this, you know, think about how you might be able to invest in the community. You're involved already, but we want, we'd like you to be more involved." So, so we did think about it and it took about a year and a half to two years, but we formulated a plan. We put a piece of property under contract at 2634 Grand Avenue, it's about an acre and that's what's shown there. And that's one of the major corridors coming into downtown. We have done our homework and we want to, we're going to develop a new bank, it's gonna be called Waukegan Community Bank. It's, it'll be part of the Wintrust family, so there's a lot of horsepower behind it. But one of the things that is very important to our operation is that we're very local and we have people that will be familiar in the community, people that will really service the city, the residents, and the businesses in this community. So, we wanted to share that information with you tonight, you know this from a few weeks ago and we wanted to just make it public. We have opened, Kathy will say a few words, but we have just opened our temporary bank a couple of doors to the west, so we're basically across the street and slightly kitty-corner from Lewis Market. And I don't know if we can advance this, does somebody, does somebody know how to advance this image here?
Yeah.
Well, if they can, the...
Tom, is Tom here? Where's Tom at? Tom? Yeah, he's, he knows it.
Let me tell you what the new...
And just for, what's the, what is the doctor's office? It used to be a...
Orchard Lane Medical Building, yes.
For those who...
I had an office of that.
Okay, Orchard Lane Medical Building, that's the site we're talking about.
Yeah, it's about 4,000 square foot size.
Advancing.
And I'm just gonna show you what the site plan is gonna look like and that's what this is out for the theater. Oh, that's the backyard. Okay, so what we're gonna do is we'll do a two-story, 8,000 square foot building, it'll have drive-throughs. The first floor will be the banking center, the second floor will have some offices, but it will be available to the community for community events, no charge, very supportive of non-for-profit agencies and any, really, any community event that you would like to hold there, we'll take care of the, you know, setting it up and making it available to you. So I'd like to tell you that, an interesting observation, as I worked with different cities, I was really amazed at how this little conversation with the mayor and the bank, he's a strong, you're a strong promoter of community development, and so an idea and some encouragement gets people thinking about it and, you know, from a small comment, it can lead to what we think is a very exciting investment, our investment in the community. So we've been here and we wanna become more involved and more engaged. And I'd like to introduce Dave Lee, the president of the bank.
Thanks, Jack. One thing I'd add again in the meeting with the mayor is, you know, the energy that's coming out of Waukegan and I've heard him say it many times, you know, "Why not Waukegan?" And so, you know, Wintrust Financial, Lake Forest Bank are truly community-based organizations and so we can't really be a Lake County Community Bank without being in Waukegan. So, we found a location, as Jack said, we're excited about breaking ground probably in June. We'll be very community-focused, as Jack said, we'll have a community room on the second floor that people can use, just let us know. And we really wanna be, you know, part of the community. We've served the community for many years on the commercial banking end of it, but we wanna be there for the, you know, for the consumer and, you know, the community folks that are in Waukegan. So we look forward to really getting into the city in a big way, so we wanna thank the mayor for planting the seed with us, because it truly happened that way. So, started thinking and we'll be there in a year, we'll have the new building done. In the meantime, we are open for business, literally a block west in temporary space. So, look forward to working with all the folks in Waukegan. Thank you.
Kathy?
Kathy is our branch president for the Waukegan Community Bank.
Thanks Dave, it's really nice of you guys to host us tonight and thanks so much for that. Very briefly, I just wanted to thank you and let you know that we opened last Monday. We've been working on the rollout of the business plan for Waukegan for many, many months now and the staff over at Grandin Orchard, who occupied and opened on Monday, is ready to meet the community. We've been going up and down the three main arterials, meeting with the small businesses. We're a bank that's all about small business, micro enterprise, and we wanna bank every household. It's an underbanked community and we really wanna get in there and get everyone in to the bank and we're gonna do that through some really fun financial literacy initiatives and partnerships that we've already started to build with key institutional players as well as 501s in the market. So, again, thank you very much and looking forward to hopefully meeting all of you. I've had the pleasure to meet some of you already and again, thank you.
David, thank you very much. And just real quick, a little background with, not only with their presentation, they had asked me to come and just talk about Waukegan, Illinois. And in speaking with them, I just kinda let my passion run free as to who we are and what we are and what we represent. This is a great community to do business in. We're traditionally just who we are and I am very excited that they chose to put this in our community, this bank in our community, right on that major artery. And these are just small things that, you know, I call them base hits, that we're gonna have to do to bring the Waukegan that we know to the forefront. This is an amazing community. It's a little bit different at times, but it's still an amazing community. Alright, with that being said, we're gonna go to some other presentations, so bear with us. The first one coming up, it will be, I'm gonna ask Alderman Moseo to speak about some of our Waukegan High School state champions. All the kids know him as Coach Mo and for their own powerlifting team. Coach Mo?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I don't know if people know this, but Waukegan has a powerlifting team we started about three years ago and since then it's grown. And that thing you see sitting up there by the mayor is a state championship won by the lady Bulldogs. We beat about 10 other teams, ladies teams. If anybody's familiar with powerlifting, you're probably wondering what is that? It's how much weight you lift relative to your body weight and there's three lifts you perform. It's the squat, the deadlift, and the bench press, if anybody knows any of those things. We had six champion, state champions, we had three male state champions, we had three girl state champions, and we had three runner-ups that took second in that. That's quite an accomplishment. And the coaches were myself, Coach Strogent, Coach Stevens, Coach Noblen, Coach Podolski, and Coach Edwerson. We run this basically through PE classes and then we also do some work after school. But this is not an easy sport, this takes a lot of work to do and these people and these students are great students. I'm not gonna give you some of their academic accolades, they're not only strong, they're really smart. I mean, they're really smart. And we got people, one of them's going to Brandeis for free, one of them's going to Kentucky for, with some money, there's a couple other of them, I don't know where they're going, but I know it's probably gonna be free because they're really, really smart.
With that being said, Mayor, I think we'll have them all come up here and I'll read off their names in the Waukegan proud, is that fine? That's right. Alright, Bulldogs, come on up here to the front, please.
They're probably a little shocked to tell me you've never seen me in pants at all. I always have shortened pieces, it's not even who I am, you know, dressed up like this, so they're probably a little bit shocked. Galila Rodriguez, two-time state champ. Legendary two-time state champ. Randy Williams, state champ. Richard Carr, runner-up. Rachel Duncan, regional champ. Tracy Luthby, state champ. Heidi, the last one. Same. Alright, part of the boys also, even if anyone is state champ, they did win a regional championship, that's over here somewhere. Alright. Eric Caswell, part of the boys team. Two-time state champ. And Tom, the strongest person in Waukegan. Part of the state championship ladies. And not just part of the boys team that won the region.
Why do we do this? Often, there are headlines, but when our young men and young ladies are doing what we're asking them to do. But when they're doing the things that we're asking them to do, no one gives them the praise. We started something in Waukegan that we're going to let our young men and our young ladies know, who are part of our school district, that we are proud of you. Stay in there. This is what it takes to be successful. It's gonna be a little bit longer than some of the others, but it'll be quite rewarding. And 10 to 15 years from now, you will be taking the place as the leaders in our communities. So we're proud of you, we're very proud of you. And you continue to do the things that you need to do to be successful citizens in our society. You guys take care, God bless.
One of the other state champs is not here, her name is Elvie Dilla, she's a three-time state champ, she won at the President's Cup, she's only a junior. Everybody knows Elvie is, she's at wrestling practice right now, so she couldn't make the presentation. And as the mayor said, these are the best kids in Waukegan. There's many more, there's many more that I come in contact with every day, I just happen to be lucky enough to have these guys every day, see them every day, and that's why I love Waukegan.
You gotta take a picture. You gotta take a picture.
Hold on, hey, you guys are gonna go...
We gotta hold the hardware, guys, come on now.
We gotta hold the hardware.
Tracy?
Let's have a row of you in front.
Row in front.
Feeling down.
How, where is he? How, come on.
That's a Pope song, dude. You wanna play football? Why?
Hands off.
Show this guy here.
That's hands off.
Alright, hold on a second, Alderman, we know the road, let's go, Alderman, we always get the Alderman's ball.
Alright, this is great, squishy.
Alright. Act like you like each other.
Turn sideways.
Alright, here we go.
Alderman here, Alderman here too. Alderman right here.
Hold on a second. Hold on, Jane. Jane. One Alderman there. Hold on.
Put you on the bench for doing that. Alright, everybody, right here again, Alderman, one more time.
Alright, Moms, Dad, is that Rich Jenkins out there? Rich!
Sure.
Alderman? Alright, we good? Alright.
One more time.
Roll off, Andrew, one, two, three.
Roll off!
That's rich. It's tall, Rich.
New.
That's good.
U.S.B.'s.
I'm sorry.
Always gotta stay here? Oh, they gotta go back to the school, right?
Go back to the room, man, the weight room.
Yep. They gotta go back to the weight room. Alright, next on our presentation is Hero Awards and Years of Service. I'd like to bring up Chief Bridges, Chief Bridges?
Yeah. Alright, thank you Mayor, thank you Council, Fire Chief Bridges, Deputy Chief Gene Decker, and wow, that's awesome. They deserve every bit of that, but I think that we need to challenge them. Uh-oh.
Anytime, man, anytime, anywhere.
Alright, Coach.
Anytime, anywhere, we're ready to go.
Alright, everyone, yeah, we constantly, we, whenever we have a cert graduation, we always tell everyone how much we absolutely love when someone takes an interest in what we do, what these firemen do. The other thing that we take a lot of joy in is when an external stakeholder recognizes these superheroes that I got, that come in day in and day out to serve this community. So, with that being said, I would like for our EMS director, Dave Chase, to come on up because he wanna talk about Waukegan superheroes.
Too, but I'd like our captain, man, also to explain the 40 figures for first. Captain Burrows. Mayor, Council. Chief asked me to submit people for the EMS Hero Awards and I said, "I'm a little accustomed to the excellence and the efficiency these guys show." As a matter of fact, around the station, we have a saying, "Good job doing your job."
They do, they do.
And so I had to real, I had to really think about it, but then I picked, then I ended up picking a call I can't really talk about, so. A young lady drove into one of the guardrails and the guardrail penetrated her car. So we chose this award where these guys actually showed their excellence and high level of skill, something doesn't happen quite often on our slower roads. Oh, microphone? Sorry. I'm used to just talking loud anyways. So I'd like to call up Italian Chief Lyons, Italian Chief Stickles, Lieutenant Swetalski, Chris Conkey. Baki, you on this award? Wade DeLonger?
He got the sharpest haircut, I know that much.
So these are the gentlemen who made the ones who were part of the call, they actually disentangled the car and saved a woman's life, she's doing well. And the state was very impressed with what we put down, what we noted about them, and they wanted to give them the Hero Awards. This is actually very prestigious, the state was very excited when they called me and told me to hand out this award to these people, so the chief gave me the honor, but I'm gonna give it back to the chief because I know better than that.
So, the IDPH, the Illinois Department of Public Health awarded these guys, let me read this off of here, because I won't remember what's on here, but they are, they're honoring the Waukegan Fire Department as a nominee for the Emergency Medical Services Hero Award, presented during Emergency Medical Services Week, which by coincidence just happens to be this week, in May 19th through the 25th. So all these gentlemen up here were involved in it and there was another five gentlemen that were on the call as well. But, so I'll present, I'm gonna walk all the way across now, present this to Chief Bridges on behalf of all these guys, but I've been in the... There's hours and hours of training just to get started in the business. One of my main jobs now is training paramedics, and we'll have a, we got a gentleman from the Waukegan Fire Department in one of our classes now, and we'll have one next year as well. So there's lots and lots of training, lots and lots of commitment, there's overtime, there's being stuck on calls and not being able to leave. So what you're looking at up here is an excellent example of a very large department that you guys have working for you here in the city of Waukegan, and they deserve a big round of applause. So, Years of Service? Okay, so what we also do every year is the Illinois Department of Public Health also does awards for Years of Service. So they're on the pile here, and they're in alphabetical order, so, 'cause I, see, I came prepared, I took stuff up. So, and we do it in five-year increments, and we try and catch everybody, but we kinda have to rely on the department. So I'm probably not gonna get everybody's name perfect, but I'll still, I'll still read them all quickly. He's trying to get, give me off the hook on the first one, which is the hardest one. Guy to Steak of Ishes, close?
That's very close.
Okay. He's got Five Years of Service Award coming. Paramedic Dan Bordinaro.
Ah, yeah.
Fifteen Years of Service. Paramedic Brian Bandell. Fifteen Years of Service. Paramedic Eric Baki. Fifteen Years of Service. Paramedic Tom McCarthy, twenty Years of Service. Twenty Years of Service, and he's retired. Maybe he got a chance to cut his grass. Paramedic Laura Lee Thomas, twenty Years of Service. Paramedic Lyle Boring, twenty Years of Service. Paramedic James O'Leary, twenty Years of Service. Paramedic Michael Fudge, twenty Years of Service. Paramedic Matthew Burleson, twenty Years of Service. Paramedic Scott Ward, twenty Years of Service. Paramedic Jacob Mount, twenty Years of Service. Paramedic Stephen Davis, twenty Years of Service. Paramedic Michael Shabel, twenty Years of Service. Paramedic David Path, twenty-five Years of Service. Also retired. Paramedic Daniel Kublenk, twenty-five Years of Service. These guys all look too young to be doing this for this long, right? Paramedic Brett Stickles, twenty-five Years of Service. Paramedic Greg Squires, twenty-five Years of Service. Paramedic Wayne Delonker, twenty-five Years of Service. And then last on the list, but not least, Paramedic Michael DeRose, thirty Years of Service.
The Brothers DeRose.
Thirty, three zero. Creaming the crop for tonight, but these guys, and these, I can't say enough about them. I don't live in Waukegan, but I work in Waukegan frequently, and they put our office out in Gurnee, but I'm right across the street from Waukegan, basically. I've known a lot of these guys for a very long time, some of them I've taught with, some of them I've worked with, a couple of them I've actually taught, which is making me feel real old right now. But, yeah, these, these guys are the best of the best, and they serve you guys very, 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 very well.
Alright. Just gonna need to talk about, y'all don't picture talk. How you doing? Let's go.
Okay.
Let's go.
They ain't gonna see me, no way. They ain't gonna be able to see, they ain't gonna be able to see me.
Okay. Jane, the official photographer, will capture you for an entire evening, or Facebook at least. Are you looking at Jane right there?
Looking right here, everybody.
Testing.
Yep, you want me to read it? Oh, no, this is it. This is it. Okay. Okay.
Better get ready, you got a fire truck you're gonna be saying yes to, too, now. They primed you up, boy, they sold it to you tonight, didn't they? Go ahead, Jenny.
Alright, we have a Waukegan Proud Award. The city of Waukegan does hereby present to Letty Castellanas this Waukegan Proud Award in recognition for your service as honorary council for the Council of the Belize, and for being a Waukegan ambassador and role model for our community and beyond, presented this May twentieth, twenty nineteen.
Okay, where your husband at? I'm giving a hug, I'm giving a hug. On behalf of the city of Waukegan, we present you this Waukegan Proud Award because you, we are proud of you. You are taking our name beyond the walls of our city, and making us understand that the importance of having you being ambassador for us throughout this country. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
I'll come down.
Alright, here we go. Alright, here we go. I could've told you to know anyway, couldn't I? Alright, let's go. Okay, here we go. Jane, right here, one more. Altman, you too. Thank you. Alright, wait, 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 wait. Okay, move back this side, so I can get everybody, and this'll guarantee everyone's smiling face will be a mountain. So I'm standing on the furniture, Mayor. One, two, three, smile. One more. There it is.
Where's our wristband? I was gonna say, where's the wristband, you're not, I'll be right back.
No, right?
I just wanna say thank you, Mayor, for this recognition, I'm honored. I love Waukegan, I live in Waukegan, I've worked for Waukegan, and special thank you to the township supervisor for allowing me to serve this community for over twenty-five years. So, thank you, thank you to my family. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, alright. Alright, everyone, we have just two more very, one is gonna be National Boat Safety Week, in recognition of National Boat Safety Week. I want to recognize the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary and Jeff Bedore, who is here tonight. Jeff, are you here? Guess not. Along with our Fire Department Special Teams, Harvard Auxiliary Coast Guard, does a tremendous job. Thank you. Before the Madam Clerk reads the resolution, I want to remind the entire public, as we enter into the warmer months, to please, please, always exercise caution out there on Lake Michigan. Alright? We're gonna read the, we're gonna read the resolution, and then, I thought Jeff was here tonight, but if not, we'll make sure we get it to him. Alright? Madam Clerk?
Proclamation, National Safe Boating Week, May eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. Whereas boating continues to be a popular recreational activity for nearly one hundred million Americans, and whereas coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are taking to the water and enjoying time together, boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing, and whereas U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. And whereas, on average, six hundred and fifty people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., seventy-six percent of these fatalities caused by drowning, and whereas the Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for seventy percent of all boating accidents, and that life jackets could prevent nearly eighty-five percent of all boating fatalities. And whereas through basic boating safety procedures, carrying lifesaving, emergency distress, and communications equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober when navigating, we can help ensure boaters on America's coastal, inland, and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. And whereas the city of Waukegan offers great access to the Lake Michigan shores with several beaches and harbors that are much-loved destinations, filled with families wishing to have a safe and enjoyable time on the waterways in our great city. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign, and proclaim May eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, as National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating, adopted this twentieth day of May, nineteen, twenty nineteen.
Okay. Okay, the proclamation motion by Altman Rivera, second by Altman Florin. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, we'll make sure that gets off to Jeff in the team. Whew, alright. Last but not least, we have Coles Museum is going to now come up and give us a brief update on the success of Coles Museum, of Coles Children's Museum, as in their second year, with the pop-up here. Here with us, Stephanie, here's Stephanie, hi, Stephanie.
Sorry, everyone, I don't have a slideshow, but I do want to give a quick update on the Coles Children's Museum pop-up, our second annual museum, that was here in February and March of this past year. And I wanna share just some general information with you about the impact that we've had. The pop-up was open for thirty-seven total days in February and March, that's close to double what it was during our first year here in Waukegan. We had eight family weekend days and seven family weekend, weekday evenings, Thursday evenings, twenty-seven field trip days with four possible field trips per day, all of that was free of charge, field trips and family hours were. We served four thousand six hundred and eighty-eight visitors, that was two thousand five hundred seventy-four visitors during family hours and two thousand one hundred fourteen visitors during field trips. The majority of our visitors, both field trips and family hours, were from the Waukegan zip codes. So we did have a great local population attending, which was fantastic. Other zip codes that attended, the largest ones, were North Chicago, Gurnee Beach Park and Lake Villa, but we had from all over the Chicago area people visiting, and then we also had a family from Arizona that was in visiting their family and came to the pop-up twice, and they were so excited to be able to come and visit that in their hometown while they were visiting. The pop-up museum, if you were not at the pop-up museum, we focused on STEAM activities, so science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, in a five thousand square foot location in downtown Waukegan, formerly known as Urban Edge. The exhibits that we had, we had a full-functioning art studio, our Imagination Playground, which are these large foam blue blocks that you can create into anything, they're a lot of fun, even for the adults. We had a reading corner, we had three puppet stages, two gravity walls, a Bernoulli blower, air tubes, and Air Amazing Station, if you walked by, that was the big full story of air tubes that you could put pom-pom balls in and track around, and then our Young Naturalist exhibit, which focused on using clues in your environment to solve natural challenges. One of the other great things about the Waukegan pop-up is the community partnerships that we've formed. So the first year that we were here, and I'm glad that the Fire Department was here, the Fire Department came to almost every family hours during the first year that we did the pop-up, and so they, they did that again this year. They came, they played with the kids, they read stories with the kids, they gave tours of the fire engines, they were really popular with the visitors. This year, the Waukegan Police Department, waving to one of our guests over there, also came as well, they did police story hours with us, but they did more than read stories with the kids. They also did, they played with the kids, and then we also had a canine demonstration once. So again, really exciting to have the community involved. The Waukegan Public Library came during every family hour, gave resources and did some story hours as well, and then this year we also had the Waukegan Queens that volunteered at a lot of the family hours. They greeted people, they checked families in, they played with the kids, they were just great role models. So I think it's just great to highlight the fact that the Waukegan community came out and did such a great job in helping us encourage people to come out and play together and have fun. So quick feedback from family visitors, we did surveys, and we just left them on the table for people to fill out, and over ninety-six percent of the families that visited said that their children enjoyed the pop-up museum. Ninety-eight percent indicated they would visit the pop-up museum in the future, and we had a lot of repeat visitors, people that came back and we got to know their faces, we got to know them from the year before, and then they came back, the kids were just a little taller, but... and proclaim May eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, 2019, as National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating, adopted this twentieth day of May, nineteen...twenty nineteen.
Okay, the proclamation motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Florian. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. We'll make sure that gets off to Jeff in the team. All right. Last but not least, we have Coles Museum. It's going to now come up and give us a brief update on the success of Coles Museum...of Coles Children's Museum as in their second year with the pop-up here. Here with us, Stephanie? Here's Stephanie. Hi, Stephanie.
Sorry, everyone, I don't have a slideshow. But I do want to give a quick update on the Coles Children's Museum pop-up, our second annual museum that was here in February and March of this past year. And I want to share just some general information with you about the impact that we've had. The pop-up was open for thirty-seven total days in February and March. That's close to double what it was during our first year here in Waukegan. We had eight family weekend days and seven family weekend...weekday evenings, Thursday evenings. Twenty-seven field trip days with four possible field trips per day. All of that was free of charge. Field trips and family hours were. We served four thousand six hundred and eighty-eight visitors. That was two thousand five hundred and seventy-four visitors during family hours and two thousand one hundred and fourteen visitors during field trips. The majority of our visitors, both field trips and family hours, were from the Waukegan zip codes. So we did have a great local population attending, which was fantastic. Other zip codes that attended, the largest ones, were North Chicago, Gurnee Beach Park, and Lake Villa. But we had from all over the Chicago area people visiting. And then we also had a family from Arizona that was in visiting their family and came to the pop-up twice. And they were so excited to be able to come and visit that in their hometown while they were visiting. The pop-up museum, if you were not at the pop-up museum, we focused on STEAM activities, so science, technology, engineering, arts, and math in a five thousand square foot location in downtown Waukegan, formerly known as Urban Edge. The exhibits that we had, we had a full-functioning art studio, our Imagination Playground, which are these large foam blue blocks that you can create into anything. They're a lot of fun, even for the adults. We had a reading corner. We had three puppet stages, two gravity walls, a Bernoulli blower, air tubes, and Air Amazing Station. If you walked by, that was the big, full-story of air tubes that you could put pom-pom balls in and track around. And then our Young Naturalist exhibit, which focused on using clues in your environment to solve natural challenges. One of the other great things about the Waukegan pop-up is the community partnerships that we've formed. So the first year that we were here, and I'm glad that the Fire Department was here, the Fire Department came to almost every family hours during the first year that we did the pop-up. And so they did that again this year. They came, they played with the kids, they read stories with the kids, they gave tours of the fire engines. They were really popular with the visitors. This year, the Waukegan Police Department...I'm waving to one of our guests over there. Also came as well. They did police story hours with us. But they did more than read stories with the kids. They also did...they played with the kids. And then we also had a canine demonstration once. So again, really exciting to have the community involved. The Waukegan Public Library came during every family hour, gave resources, and did some story hours as well. And then this year, we also had the Waukegan Queens that volunteered at a lot of the family hours. They greeted people, they checked families in, they played with the kids. They were just great role models. So I think it's just great to highlight the fact that the Waukegan community came out and did such a great job in helping us encourage people to come out and play together and have fun. So quick feedback from family visitors. We did surveys, and we just left them on the table for people to fill out. And over ninety-six percent of the families that visited said that their children enjoyed the pop-up museum. Ninety-eight percent indicated they would visit the pop-up museum in the future. We had a lot of repeat visitors, people that came back and we got to know their faces. We got to know them from the year before, and then they came back. The kids were just a little taller. But this was their community museum, and they had a lot of fun. Some of the comments. "So friendly, helpful, the staff, great variety, so thankful you'd come to Waukegan. I love how the kids had so many chances to create. Play-based learning is missing often in schools, and this gives them a chance to be active and imaginative. I cannot say how much I love the pop-up. Families in our area may not have the money to bring their kids to a museum. What a blessing. Everything was lovely, please come back." We also had field trip surveys. A hundred percent of the surveys completed. The teachers agreed or strongly disagreed with...or strongly agreed with the exhibits were engaging with...for my students. A hundred percent agreed or strongly agreed with the staff were friendly and helpful. The comments included, "Our students loved all the hands-on activities. It's close enough to our school to give students an experience they may not get. This was a great idea. My students enjoyed it a lot. This kind of museum is a must in every community." And the kids were highly engaged. They pointed out things we learned in school. And that's one of the things that we like to do, is to create that school and museum connection, so that children are getting a hands-on component to the things that they're learning in school. And I definitely just want to thank you all. Waukegan was our first pop-up ever for Coles Children's Museum. We were excited to be able to come back and expand the program. Right now, we're currently in Round Lake Beach. We're finishing up that this weekend. And we have just secured our location for the fall in North Chicago. Yes. Thank you. The Mayor here was very helpful in bringing the Mayor from North Chicago over to the Waukegan pop-up, so that he could see it and get a sense of just how exciting it was. And they were on board right away. So here is my plea. We are looking for a new location for the Waukegan pop-up. We would love to be back in February and March again. So if you know of a location, about three thousand to five thousand square feet, hopefully by public transportation, with parking, adequate facilities for families, restrooms, changing areas, that kind of thing, we would love to talk to you, because we would love to be able to come back in February and March again for the third annual Waukegan pop-up museum. Thank you very much.
Right. And I just want to point out, when we first talked about this, the pop-up museum was going to be on the third floor of City Hall. And I had...then I asked David, "David, you need to go out and check this out." Next thing I know, we're at Urban Edge. And while we might have some commitments at Urban Edge, we have already been looking at a location in our downtown area to bring that back. Because what is our goal? As we said, our goal in Waukegan is to move to a destination spot. We went from twenty-five hundred the first year, now to five thousand. And while I probably didn't want anybody else to have this great gift, but I'm glad that we do. Because our goal from there was to do what? To take those families that had a great experience here and to move them to the Glen...Glenview, where they can get a total experience. And more importantly, it is to understand that these little boys and girls, particularly in that elementary and preschool age, what they can gain and obtain from this, not just one time, but over and over again. That was our mission and our goal, and we're sticking to that. So along with myself, you, David Motley, and the host of Alderman up here, and now that we have the township supervisor who is in the house, I know she's gonna put a SOS out for us as well. I'm doing what you do to me, Pat. That's right. Because what is this doing for our young boys, our young girls? Is exposing them to educational opportunities, which makes them much more prepared when they get to elementary, middle school, and high school than college. That's what this is all about. It can happen in Waukegan. We're leading the charge now. Now, we can't lead the charge then give it up to somebody else. But we're gonna be working with you, so stay tuned. And I'll be getting in contact with David or myself. We'll find a spot.
Thank you. And thank you again. We really had fun here in Waukegan.
Thank you. All right. All right, David, we did it. Two weeks in a row?
Jane, two.
Uh-oh. Jane?
Integral part of the solution.
Oh, Jane. That does go without saying, but yes, Jane, very, very integral part of the solution. Thank you, Jane. All right, here we go. Audience time. No, 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 I stand...I stand corrected. Motion...motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Kirkwood, to approve the regular meeting minutes, meeting minutes from May...from Monday, May sixth, 2019. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Bill...I'm sorry. Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Newsome, to approve special meeting minutes from Monday, May sixth, 2019. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item three, audience time. Madam Clerk?
Dylan Bodett. Three minutes.
Hi, all. I'm incredibly happy to have seen the IGA for the ethylene oxide air testing that we're gonna be talking about later in the meeting, especially point four, HNI. It's very nice. I know that Mark's gonna be presenting it to Lake County Health Department on Wednesday for ratification, so I fingers crossed that it passes in both here and in Gurnee, so that we can move forward with air testing. I'm very proud of all of our elected officials that are getting this done. It's quite an amazing thing. I'd also like to remind everybody who's been following this issue that on Thursday, thanks to the hard work of concerned community members throughout Lake County, including our sister organization Stop ETO, Clean Power Lake County, and members of Waukegan and Gurnee, the Illinois EPA will be holding a meeting at Whittier Elementary School that's at nine oh one North Lewis Avenue to discuss the installation of upgrades to emission reduction technology, including catalytic scrubbers at the Medline facility in Waukegan. The scrubber technology that they're talking about putting in, this catalytic scrubbers, I briefly touched on last time I talked to you. And it's much more efficient than what they currently have at the Medline facility and will hopefully remove about ninety-five percent of what's now coming out of the stacks in Waukegan. However, this may come at a price. Catalytic scrubbers are responsible for the majority of explosions at ethylene oxide sterilization facilities, so much so that in nineteen ninety-seven, a law was rescinded that allowed ethylene oxide sterilization facilities to vent their warehouses without filtration in the case of combustion events involving catalytic scrubbers in order to prevent a catastrophic explosive failure. This introduces another source of fugitive emissions that are still a major concern for us. As has previously been mentioned, fugitive emissions are those that come from anywhere but the stack. With the installation of this additional catalytic scrubber technology, not only does Medline increase their risk of explosion, but they also introduce another large potential source for fugitive emissions that are not covered by current legislation and would not need to be reported to any nearby property owners. The second point that I would like to make is the upgrades to these scrubber systems are supposedly to bring the emitted levels of ethylene oxide down to a zero, which raises an important question. In all of the previous filings for emitted ETO from these facilities, the emissions are listed in parts per million. However, we know from the EPA's data that the cancer-causing potential of ETO is in the parts per trillion. This means that a zero-part-per-million-emissions facility would still be producing and emitting at two hundred thousand times the level associated with elevated risks of cancer. So I know that I and my wife will be at Whittier Elementary School on Thursday to ask these and other questions of the Illinois EPA. And I hope that all of you will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Bodett.
Okay, so I'm here to reiterate the same thing. May twenty-third, Thursday, from six thirty to eight thirty P.M., Whittier Elementary School. This is specifically addressing ethylene oxide. We must all now show up. We must show a solid unified front and show that we are interested in our community's future and our community's environmental health. We must all be there on Thursday. Immediately, there are four questions that need to be addressed. One, the emissions capture suggested at one hundred percent. That translates over to zero emissions. But at what measurement? Like my husband said, the cancer-causing potential of ethylene oxide to humans is measured at parts per trillion. That means that ethylene oxide can register at zero and still cause cancer if it is measured at parts per million or parts per billion. So unless it's specifically parts per trillion, it does nothing for us. Second, while placing the building under negative air pressure sounds like a solution, the negative air pressure will need to be around the entire lot of the facility to address fugitive emissions. Fugitive emissions are many, as he has suggested already. Third, the scrubbing technology, which if they are following the Vantage Model, they will be using...they will propose to use in dry scrubbers. In nineteen ninety-four, all sterilization facilities were mandated to install dry scrubbers into their emission systems. But in the five years following, the mandate was rescinded. The dry scrubbers turned out to be highly explosive. The explosions were determined to be a result of the dry scrubber process. Lastly, these measures being taken do not address the stock on hand. After the AB specialty explosion, we looked into their stock on hand and did some calculations. If an explosion due to ETO happened at Medline, their stock on hand would destroy all non-reinforced structures within six hundred feet, including Route forty-one and all vehicles traveling on the road. We cannot allow Medline to try and silence us by installing mediocre systems. And we must all show up now and show a solid unified front. No matter the color of our skin, the money in our pocket, or social standing, we all deserve health, and we must all use our voice now to demand it. Please show up on Thursday, May twenty-third, six thirty to eight thirty, at Whittier Elementary School.
Thank you. Jennifer Rice De La Sanchez.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Cunningham and Waukegan City Council. My name is Jennifer Rice De La Sanchez, and I have been the principal of Whittier Elementary School for the past three years. I was born at Victory Memorial Hospital and was born and raised here in Waukegan. I'm blessed to work at Whittier to serve our students and families, as well as you here in Waukegan. I'm here this evening to represent all of our six hundred students and their families for a huge safety concern around our parent drop-off and pickup times. We're lucky to have Saint Paul's Church across the street partner with us and let our families park there as they drop off and pick up their students, as well as Garden Place, which is adjacent to Whittier. Even that, though, has gotten dangerous for our students and for our families as they have to cross Lewis Avenue to get to our school doors. I remember the first time I reached out to Alderman Newsome about our safety concerns. And as soon as I opened the door to welcome her, a car accident unfolded really right in front of our eyes. You remember that, Alderman? And she graciously, at that point, reached out to the city and worked with you all to repaint the crosswalk, paint within our...within the street for all of our families, and these lines have since faded. In my three years as the leader of Whittier, during school arrivals and dismissals, I have witnessed countless incidents where our crossing guards needs to jump out of the way of incoming traffic due to not...cars not seeing them and/or their stop signs. Six rear-end accidents due to cars slamming on the brakes and not noticing our crossing guards. An additional one where our teacher was rear-ended pulling into our parking lot, as well as another teacher rear-ended pulling out of our parking lot. Two collisions where cars have crashed into our battery-operated slow-down lights. Eight collisions where cars have hit our caution crosswalk sign in the middle of the road. One accident where a car swerved to avoid hitting students in the crosswalk and demolished our school marquee and ran it over right there in front of our front doors. And most recently, one of our students was hit from a hit-and-run driver that did not see her on Garden Place. And she flew onto the roof of the car, onto the hood of the car. Thankfully, she is okay. Our plea to you and Waukegan City Council here today is to support our parents here with me tonight and not here with me tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
And our school district. Thank you.
If you leave those, I can include them with the...
Yeah. Why don't you leave that at your notes?
Your displays.
Please, I will, I'll leave it, yes.
Okay.
So our plea is for a parking lot on the east side of Lewis. Thank you.
I'm sorry, your plea is for what?
Our plea is for a parking lot on the east side of Lewis on our campus to work with our county, because we know that Lewis is a county road. And so our plea is to have a parking lot where our parents can pull in on the east side, and our families do not have to cross Lewis to come to our doors. So our plea is to work with our school district, as they are working with us here, Mr. Milton and Mr. Hickman, as well as the county.
Yeah, let's work with Mr. Milton. Let's get together. We'll get together, we'll go from there, me and you, the chief, we'll go from there, okay? Yes, ma'am.
Rochelle Evans. Rochelle Evans. Rochelle Evans.
She was here. She might have.
Christopher Losavita.
Hey, Chris. Hi, good evening. My name's Chris Losavita. I'm the owner of the community, Coach Loss. Been coaching football for Waukegan for almost ten years. It's great to see some of the guys up here, the powerlifting guys. We need some more football players up there. I'm here for behalf of six ward residents of John's Manville Place. And Mr. Turner, congratulations on your newly-acquired position. John's Manville Place most would consider an alley behind Greenwood. But it is, it does have a street sign, mail gets delivered to it. The former Alderman, great job year after year of filling potholes and things of that nature. But after years of those potholes, you've got the...it's like the moon's surface in some areas, these undulated areas. The water flow currently is, you know, it'll curve and go onto a residence property where parking spots such as mine are eroded. You know, and I'd like to do my residence parking spots, but the way the water goes, you know, it would just continue to erode. You know, there's some sewers that are almost non-functional because water pools way on the other side of it. So there's a lot of things. And I know a lot of John's Manville Place, there are a lot of duplexes, so they're not always owned or occupied. So the people are renters, coming and going, and yeah, you know, they don't have so much care or, you know, maybe so much...a little bit of pride in where they live and what the street looks like. So from a residence standpoint, I'm willing to do whatever it takes. If it's signatures or this or that, I'd like to be a part of the solution rather than say, hey, there's a problem, this is what has to be done. So whatever needs to be done or it can be looked at, that's why I'm here today, just to get that out to you. And again, congratulations on your position.
Do you have my phone number?
I don't.
Can you give me a call? And if you're gonna be here... If you're gonna be here for the duration of the meeting, I'll speak with you afterwards. But we are talking about it, and we're putting a plan together.
Oh, great.
Even as you speak.
Wonderful. Well, I appreciate that things have...in the process. I need to get going, I've got kids to put to bed.
What's your address, Mr. Losavita?
Eight six five John's Manville Place.
All right, I'll stop by and talk with you.
Hey, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
On your way out, see Mike, raise your hand, Mike. Talk to him real quick. He'll fill you in with some things, too. All right, thank you.
LeBaron Moen. Milton?
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham, Alderman, community members. LeBaron Moen, Chief Operations Officer for Waukegan School District. I just wanted to come before you for a few minutes this evening to discuss an opportunity the school district has. We have an opportunity to improve our facilities within our school district. This is very important to us. We want to meet academics where they are. We want to provide students with an opportunity to learn. So what we've done is we have been proactive and strategic. We have created a capital improvement plan that identifies ten years of capital needs for all of our school buildings, split up into ten categories. Now, for those of you who don't know, on May third, we actually were with Senator Bush talking about some transportation-related capital needs. Mayor Cunningham was there for the city of Waukegan. We were also there with Round Lake School District, College of Lake County, and Lincolnshire School District. We are at fifty-six percent of our funding adequacy, per the state funding... We are at fifty-six percent of our funding adequacy per the state funding standards, which makes us a tier-one school district. Right now, we have four-point-three million dollars in what we would consider transportation-related capital needs, which is our parking lots and sidewalks. Those, those are what, that's what our students use to get to school every day. Twenty-point-five million dollars within the next two to three years for immediate facility infrastructure needs. And we have an estimated one-hundred-and-sixteen million dollars over the next ten years of facility improvements we want to put forward. What we wanted to share with you this evening is that we have hosted a campaign and we've done four community meetings at several of our schools. Lion, Benny, Brookside Campus at the high school, and Lincoln Center, where we have shown the plan to the community. We have had parents involved. We have had Mr. Turner attended one of our meetings, the Alderman. We've also had staff members from other schools. And we've also had students from Washington Campus attend some of the meetings to understand our needs. But what we wanted to bring forward tonight is we, we have identified infrastructure improvements. We want to eliminate environmental concerns and distractions from our students so we can meet academics where they are. Even though we can purchase all the curriculum in the world, we can purchase all the Chromebooks in the world, but if a student is distracted based on the fact that a classroom has no heat or there's a leak in the corner of the classroom, then they're not going to be in the right mindset to learn. So that's what we wanted to bring forward to you this evening. I also wanted to note that our plan with the Waukegan Board of Education is to bring a financing plan and proposal with these identified infrastructure needs. It is difficult for us to forecast ten years and commit to financing, but we want to take baby steps, one year, two year, three years, and come back and reevaluate the financing because we want to make this a real-life plan that we can put into motion to benefit our staff, students, and communities. Lastly, I'd like to note that we have posted a video of the presentation we did at the Brookside Campus. It's on YouTube, district webpage.
Thank you, sir.
And our presentation as well. We'll share that information if you could link it up there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chelsea Motto. Chelsea Motto. Chelsea Motto.
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham and lovely panel. And in regards to the presentation that Ms. Rice De La Sanchez has talked to you earlier, we are here representing our students and parents. And my job here tonight was actually interpret for some parents if they wanted to speak. I know that we have short, such a short amount of time. And I pretty much, they have explained everything to you in matters of security. We have many parents who are concerned for our children's safety, as well as parents. And being that Lewis Avenue is such a busy street, that's why we are here tonight. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for having us tonight, being that it is very busy and it's already late and I'm hungry and tired. We just want to go home, so thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Mendez. Patricia Mendez. Patricia Mendez. Ignacio Ortiz. Ignacio Ortiz. Ignacio. David Vialobos.
Greetings, everyone. David Vialobos, former Alderman for the city of Waukegan. I just want to start off to let you know I have one kudos and one concern that I'd like to speak about. The first kudos is thank you for moving forward with the ambient air testing, and I see that you're voting on that. I think it's a nice perk, a bonus, that it looks like the county will pay one-third refunding. So that's going to save us somebody as a city, which I think is wonderful. So I'm very glad to see that that's moving along and going forward. As the Burdette's mentioned, definitely please, everyone come to this meeting about Medline to understand what Medline's trying to do. This does affect our community, does affect all of us and our air quality here. Waukegan has, through the American Lung Association, often gets low grading of F grades consistently. So things like Medline affect that to us. The concern I have is regarding the appropriations vote tonight. For the new Aldermen, please note that this would be considered the third fiscal, fiscal budget that's in a deficit. It's just grown every single year. Keep that in mind, please. Also, I think it might be best recommendation to hold it over to allow the other two Alderwomen to be present to vote on that appropriations. It's the budget, so I don't think it's a, a good pace, a good pace for Waukegan to continue growing a deficit budget year after year. So that's my concern, so please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Carrasco.
Um, yes, good evening. I just would like to start just to mention some of the flaws in communication here at City Hall, perhaps we're not aware of them. According to the city Waukegan website, it lists a mayor's right-hand person as a special projects analyst in the mayor's staff. However, when you go to email him, it bounces back and it says it doesn't accept any emails. Oops. How are we supposed to communicate? So that needs to be looked into. And there may be many different reasons for that occurring.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Margaret. Hold it, the time. Is there a certain date so we can go back, because it makes sure I T. go and check that? You have a date?
I have.
If you do, just give it to me. Just call Isabel, give it to her, we'll go from there.
I will send a copy of the email, yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
And also, while we're updating that, Alderman Mosio shared with me that he utilizes a special email. So perhaps maybe the website can reflect the correct email for him, and thank you for letting me know. Next, when you go to the city Waukegan website, now, for some magical reason, the YouTube link to see the videos of city council meetings has been removed. My, my, my. This past Friday, in response to a FOIA request, and I just wanted to, as I tell the mayor many times, don't shoot the messenger, I have so many people contact me, asking me to submit FOIAs and questions. And the purpose is for getting the correct information and clarifying. Sometimes word in the street is totally wrong. Anyhow, in this case, the response from the city was that they had absolutely nothing that met that criteria. Well, I'm going to give people a little tip. When I submit a FOIA, it's because I already know. I already have the information. Need I remind you that the FOIA disclosure officer is responsible for providing processing? And also, that is unlawful for the city of Waukegan to destroy, dispose of any of the evidence pertaining to the FOIA. I'm going to tell you the reason why I submitted that FOIA, and it's in the best interest of the city. Because the company that I FOIAed, we are subjecting the city to a great liability.
Thank you, Ms. Moen.
For by-by night and don't exist.
Thank you, thank you. Edgar Sandoval.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Edgar Sandoval. I'm a PhD candidate at the University of Washington, Seattle. I grew up here in Waukegan, graduated from Waukegan, worked at Crystal Ray St. Martin for a bit. And so I am here tonight, because I've been reading a lot of stuff about Waukegan. And for my project, for my dissertation that I'm doing, I'm actually looking into Waukegan. And so part of it, I've received some grant funding thus far to fund the project. And so I'm just here to share a little bit about it. The project looks at Waukegan as a suburb of Chicago and it examines some of the local politics that go on here. I'm specifically interested in some of the conversations the city council, as well as community members and businesses, have been having on economic development in the suburb. Considering some of the changes that occurred in the nineteen-sixties and seventies in Waukegan, and then some of the more recent changes in demographics, right? We have a lot more different communities moving into the city. I feel like it's a very interesting moment in time to look at a place like Waukegan. There aren't many places like it, particularly, and there isn't a lot of research done on suburbs. And so I'm, I'm interested in examining that, that role, immigration, some of the issues and conversations around the environment that people have been having, as well as education. So these are just, it's just generally a case study of what Waukegan is doing currently. And so, yes, I'll be reaching out to some of the Aldermen and the mayor, as well as some of the folks that I know who have been doing some of this work the past few months. My email, I don't know if I'm allowed to share that on you? It's Edgar, E.D.G.A.R.S., twenty-one at U Dub, U W dot E D U. You can Google Edgar Sandoval, U Dub Geography. I'm a geographer. And you can find me there. But otherwise, thank you for having me and I look forward to talking to some of you.
Thank you. Rob Palamore.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, fellow citizens. The proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen saddles Waukegan taxpayers with a three-point-six-million-dollar deficit. This deficit is nearly identical to the deficit Mr. Cunningham campaigned against in the election for mayor. When he assured voters his many years on the city council had given him the insight he needed to get our budget under control. This deficit is nearly identical to those which led voters to reject an incumbent mayor. The Cunningham deficit is nearly identical to his predecessors, except that it is larger, thanks in part to several additions to payroll and an irresponsibly expensive land acquisition when taxpayers were called upon to subsidize the blight inflicted upon this community by an absentee slumlord. Having handed up his second budget deficit, the mayor promises to start chipping away at it. The truth is, instead of chipping, the city starts to need, needs to start cutting. The city payroll accounts for eighty percent of the budget. That's ten points higher than what experts recommend. It's no secret that the Sabanjin surpluses were built up largely due to cuts in payroll. These cuts were achieved in the face of fierce resistance from the city council on which Mr. Cunningham served. While there may be a general agreement that Waukegan needs more than two-hundred-seventy-three workers to function effectively, the numbers dictate that four-hundred-and-eighty-one are more than this city can afford. Somewhere in between, there has to be an equilibrium point. And while that exact number is debatable, there is no question that this city is not getting value for money from workers, many of whom were hired on the basis of a friends and family hiring plan. This deficit would be less onerous to taxpayers if city workers took some pride in their work, as any family-run business would. Instead, we have a co-division that appears conspicuous in its absence and a police department that tolerates dereliction of duty. It should come as a surprise to no one that Alderman Turner won an election on the strength of his conservative principles. One of the core tenets of conservatism is maintaining balanced budgets. And the voters in the Sixth Ward will be watching to see how Mr. No-Tax Turner casts his first significant vote on this issue. Even if he endorses the Cunningham deficit, however, he has four years to hope people forget. But with a mayoral race coming the year after next, Terry Link and the Tap Ring Gaming Alliance might want to hedge their bets and start looking for a candidate that can balance a budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the audience time, sir.
All right. Where's that young man at? You got your taste of what Waukegan City Council is all about. Welcome. All right, Main Street. No, I think that's, actually that has been held over, everyone. Item four, item four A has been held over. Item B, in the resolution proclamation presentation, there's going to be a, a motion by Alderman Turner, second Alderman Rivera, to ratify appointment with Ricardo Retana Nava to the Waukegan stakeholder participation panel. I know he's here. I saw him come. Stand up, sir.
Ricardo?
Ricardo. He was here. I, I saw him earlier. He was here earlier. All right. All right. Are there any questions to the motion? And similar what this is, this is to the Community Development Block Grant stakeholders. Simply what they do is, when an application time, they come in, they have an opportunity to review those applications, the criteria, to determine if funding is needed for those particular organizations. Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item C, motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Florian, to, to approve the proclamation of one-hundredth anniversary of the Order of Demolay. Are there any questions to the motion?
What's Demolay?
Bob? Janet? There we go. We have, we read the resolution. Let's get the resolution on.
Proclamation?
Oh, proclamation, I apologize.
One-hundredth anniversary of the Order of Demolay. Whereas the Order of Demolay was chartered on April first, nineteen nineteen, and is a character building organization for young men from twelve to twenty-one years of age. And whereas, under the membership of adults, these young men are taught to prepare themselves to become better citizens and better leaders for tomorrow through the use of a variety of self-directed and world applications and activities. And whereas, Demolay recognizes that a high level of involvement and enthusiasm can be far more important for success in the program than any particular skill or ability. And whereas, Demolay helps develop young men of character into good men of all ages by teaching leadership skills, civic awareness, responsibility, and character development. And whereas, by epitomizing timeless values and accepting the challenge of leadership, both of character and of action, the young men of Demolay transform themselves into citizens of the highest caliber within our community. And whereas, the organization has carried out the aforementioned, mentioned goals for one-hundred years through programs of athletic competition, social activity, civic service, and charitable projects across the United States, five continents, and twenty-five countries. And whereas, Demolay International is currently celebrating its centennial and will use this opportunity to advise citizens of their many activities and to recognize the millions of active and senior Demolay members throughout the world. Now therefore, will be it resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the city council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim Monday, May twentieth through twenty-six, twenty-nineteen, as Demolay Week in celebration of their one-hundredth anniversary and urge all citizens to join in saluting the young men of the Order of Demolay and in expressing appreciation for the fine example set by them in contributing to the welfare of our community, adopted this twentieth day of May, twenty-nineteen.
Who's here to present? Where's the look? Who's here to, to pick up? Come on up. All the young men are here. And they're wearing suits, too, with ties. I like that. I like that. You know, we, we always, always, we're talking about the Waukegan power, while we're here. Now, for this organization, we're teaching young men to be young men.
Amen.
This is how we want young men to be presented.
That's right.
Put a shirt and tie when people look at you different.
They sure do.
They talk to you different.
That's right.
You're part of the organization that's teaching youth, and hopefully, we can get a lot of young men to move into this direction. So, I say to you, I salute you, congratulate you, and continue to be the representation that your, this organization is teaching you to be, to be successful in our society. What is your name? Carl? How you doing, Carl?
Miles.
Miles. Oh, say it loud. Ranzel Kulo. Yeah?
Right.
Great, sorry, man. I like the hair. We're going to take a picture. Are we over enough? Got to get over enough?
Yep.
All right, here we go.
They also have their chapters.
Well, come on up.
Yeah.
Oh, you got a lady teacher. All right.
That's great.
Here we go. All right, congratulations to you guys. Congratulations. All right. Item five. There's a motion, motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Seager, to approve a waiver for noise to exceed 50 decimals on 5/26, 1 to 11 p.m. From 1 p.m. to 11 p.m., Memorial Day Theory at Lake Hurst Events, special events permits pending staff approval. Are there any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Reports and communications. These are just for, there's no vote needed on these, just to give you information. Open bids and requests for proposal. Simply what that means is that there are several bids that are going to be open, what date?
I think there are about 10 of them. I believe that there are about 10 bids that are open right now, which people should go on the website, check out. They have various due dates, and they involve different topics. We're looking for pres-, proposals from contractors primarily.
Second, City of Waukegan, tax year 2018, equalized assessed evaluation, the EAV, $1,198,892,817 is what are, of all of our properties within our community, that's the, the EAV for that. Equal, equalized assessed evaluation. The goals for that is to continue to go up each and every year. I think this year, and that's for 2018, we did about a seven, seven and a half, or seven percent increase. I'm predicting that number's probably going to continue to increase at a, between five to six, five to seven percent every year thus far. And it might taper off probably about four or five years, about four percent. Simply what that means, that's just the value of your home. It will be going up as you expect it to be, and you're, if I'm not mistaken, that's what your tax bill is based off of. All right. Treasury report. The treasury reports are filed. Anything for that, Doc?
Well, sir, you can get it, the clerks, you can get it on the website.
If you need a, if you want a foyer, a cup, you don't have to foyer a cup of that, do you, Doc?
No, this is always been public information.
All right. There it is.
Anybody has to ask, they can get it from my treasury, my office, directly.
All right. We're going to go to new business.
Your honor?
Yes. Alderman Mosio.
If the council has an appetite, I'll make a motion for an ombudsman for new business.
Omnibus for new business. Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Kirkwood. Are there any questions?
Do you want all of the new business?
Motions to omnibus. That means we're going to take all of the items from 7A up to 7N as one motion. I will read them out.
I'd like to take short E, item E. I don't, I do not want to include that in the omnibus.
You want to do it in omnibus? Okay. So, we'll take item E. So, right now, there's a motion on the floor, item seven, seven, A through D, F through N. Any other questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. So, I'm going to read the motion. I'm going to read the items on the omnibus, and then vote on them as one. Motion to authorize proper city official to pay the 2019, 2020 Northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Lab membership assessment fee of $124,000, $124,000, $146. This payment will be made from line item 10608524436. Item B, motion to approve purchase authority not to exceed $50,000 with stretchers, police equipment for police uniforms and commodities for May 1, 2018, April 30th, 2019 fiscal year, as well as approval to fiscal year, May 1, 2019, to April 30th, 2020, not to exceed $52,000 by granting a good faith waiver per section 2-458I7. Funding line item 10607525469. Item C, motion to approve payment, Capinella and Sons, for bona fide operating emergencies in total amount of $25,984.28, funds to be charged, line item 55591552438, and 555913024438. Item D, motion to approve purchase authority of $30,000 with Midwest aggregate for fiscal year 18 and 19 by granting a good faith waiver per section 2-458I7, funds to be charged, line item 555915425468. Skipping item E. Item F, motion to approve vendor payment dated May 20th, 2019, a total amount of $3,012,823.40. Item G, motion to approve regular payroll dated May 10th, 2019, in total amount of $1,508,564.44. Item H, motion to approve police auxiliary clothing allowance payroll dated May 10th, 2019, a total amount of $1,080. Motion, item I, motion to approve elected official civil service type and payroll dated May 10th, 2019, a total amount of $5,141.66. Item J, motion to approve mayor approval vacation cash out payroll dated May 20th, correction, May 10th, 2019, a total amount of $1,860.55. Item K, motion to approve PBLC holiday cash out payroll dated May 10th, 2019, a total amount of $931,059. Item M, motion to approve final cash out, names listed on the payroll, names listed on the agenda payroll dated May 10th, 2019, a total amount of $31,862.75. And item N, motion to approve all block party applications. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
All right. Going back to 7E, motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Newsom, to authorize proper city official to award a contract to C-grade LLC via the H-GAC Cooperative Purchasing Program, Local Government Procurement Service, for the purchase of one C-grade model TB50CA Marata Custom 1500 GPM pumper, for the not to exceed $550,000 funded $409,091 via FEMA grant, and the balance via local match, the purchase charge, the line item 231-323126494. Any questions to the motion?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you. So, I seem to recall that this came up, or there was some discussion about it several weeks ago during the campaign or election cycle, and I believe there was a question about, or a comment made, that these monies, or a portion of these monies for this pumper, were going to be taken from the firefighters' fund, or something, something of that, to that effect. Now, I just want to make sure that we're covered on the, on the expenditure, and it's not going to have any deleterious effect on our firefighters and their pay schedule. That make sense?
Yeah. I think there was some communications, and we'll maybe let Chief Decker kind of answer that question for us.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah. What had happened was, we have a foreign fire tax board, and the foreign fire tax, it is tax dollars that's collected from insurance that, for companies that do business overseas. And that's been in place for several, several years. And we have a board on the fire department that consists of the fire chief and other department members who are elected, and that board decides how that money is spent. So, as tax dollar money, that is not firefighters' money. That is a fund. When we were searching for, we wanted an apparatus that was operationally the same as our other ones, so we didn't have one oddball thing.
Right.
The $450,000 grant didn't cover what we usually get, and we don't get a fancy apparatus. In fact, we checked multiple vendors, and we couldn't find anything close to $450,000. So, they took it upon themselves to take that to that committee. But in the meantime, the finance director found Tina Smagalsky that we had extra money in that grant line item fund.
Right.
On the surplus previously. So, we actually declined those funds from the foreign fire tax board, and we're using that money that was previously in a grant.
Got it. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thanks for the explanation.
And to add to that, and this is something we're going to get cleared up with, the IAFF 473, I think it was on their website.
Right.
That this was coming out of the pockets of firefighters. Not once was this ever coming out of the pockets of firefighters. That's the first thing we want to clear up. The second thing is, we were in the midst of going through a grant process. So, that was just, you know, that's not even incorrect information. That was just wrong information to be put out, that the city of Waukegan will take dollars out of the pockets of our firefighters, or any employees. And I think between myself, the chief's office, and the finance director, after, under learning of the 231 line item, which is, I'm going to give a little history lesson for those, that is when we had, we were able to get police and fire out of a grant. It was a, it was a, I think it was a national grant that we can get police and fire.
Well. Safer Grant.
The Safer Grant.
Safer Grant, yes.
Well, you know, those dollars came out of that particular fund because everyone didn't pan out, so there was dollars left over. So, that's where we received those funds from. Not, and I want to repeat this, never have we even looked at having our employees pay for the equipment that is used to service this community.
Right.
That was just incorrect information. And it was, you know, put out, and it gave a, you know, that could give a bad name to any city, not alone Waukegan. But I'm glad that we're able to clear that up, find that, and now get the apparatus vehicle that is needed. And believe me, some of those engines these guys have working with dates back to 1996.
Correct, sir.
1996. So, you know, through, through our capital improvement plan, we have been able to get a, is it a, ambulance, and now two engines.
Yes, we've got the ambulance and the last previous engine out of the bond fund from last year, and now this engine is, you know, it's a 90-10 split for the original $450,000 with the federal government.
And this is part of their vehicle maintenance program to replace all vehicles. The police department has, has a program like, and our public works. But we'll chip away at it, and that's what it's all about. But thank you for bringing that up. Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item eight. Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Newsom, to approve appropriation orders of fiscal year, May 1, 2019, to April 30th, 2020. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florian.
No.
The motion's passed and carried. Motion to, motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Mosio, to approve as presented the orders with affirmative and standing committee of the city council. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Wait, I have one.
I'm sorry.
One question.
Motion by Alderman Florian.
She wants, she got some questions.
Questions.
She had a question.
Oh, a question. I'm sorry. Question by Alderman Florian.
I'm curious about the combination of the last committee on the sheet here with the code revisions, appeals, and negotiations. I know you've historically been the chair of the Labor Relations Committee, which makes sense because it deals with personnel matters and union negotiations. But I'm, I'm curious why we've compiled a new committee with code revisions included in that with you as chair.
Those will be different type of issues that will come up to council, that the mayor need to be a part of. And that's, that's, there's no magical reason why. That's the only reason, ma'am. That's, that's it. I don't have any, there's no.
But in the past, weren't code issues handled with a different committee?
Well, we could have, no, we can, we can put those things in a different committee to be handled, bring some other things back. We just felt, as we moved through our code process, this would be a better, this would be a better fit for Alderman to take care of those situations, and then I to be, to chair that, those codes. And it depends on what, it will depend on really what comes to that. We expect for that to be not as, meet as often as the other committees, standing committees will be meeting. So, I, I guess there was no other thought behind that. Okay. Alderman Newsom?
So, if, say for instance, there is a code or issue we need to look at, would we bring it forth to this committee or the attorney? Like I talked to you about this evening. An issue that we may have, and be it, it wouldn't go through the building department or anything like that, or how, how would we address the issue?
I think it would, there would be still some things that would go through the planning process and through the planning and zoning board, because they would involve modifications to the zoning code, for example, and there's a, there's a public hearing process that's required for that. But we went through quite a few code revisions in the last few years, modernizing the liquor code, the video gaming code, a number of other ones as well, and went through quite a bit, quite a bit of that work to bring our codes much closer to modern in, in the way that really affects citizens on a day-to-day basis. Right now, the, they've gone through judiciary committee of, because simply, I think because it sounded good. There was no particular rhyme or reason to that. It's just judiciary sounded like law. But we really have a, a lot of interface with, with the court system, which is really what the judiciary committee in Washington and Springfield are designed to do. They oversee courts, so it's not, and interact with it. We don't have that. So, the idea here is to be able to bring up ideas and get them, if there's something important enough to really justify changing a wide-ranging code in the city, it probably should have as much buy-in as it, as is possible. One of the things, for example, in the, and I don't mean to monopolize the discussion here, but the video gaming, for example, we mired down in the 1,500-foot rule over the last over the last few months and we tried to come up with something different and we kept getting different perspectives. I think perhaps if that had been brought before a larger board, uh, in the beginning that was, that was led more strongly by the mayor, we might've been able to reach a consensus earlier on and perhaps avoided some of those issues and that's the kinda thing that, um, that's one of the ideas that was behind it, at least from my perspective.
So, the process now is, um, if there is an issue, um, with a, a code or something that we see, we bring it to the attorney, you first, or?
You can.
To modify what we already have on the books or?
It could be, that's, that would be one of the ways, you know, that you always have the right as to make it, even if it's not on the agenda, you can make a motion to have me, have me consider making a modification to an ordinance or to have a discussion on it, put that on it in that next meeting, you, you have those powers.
So, how does the building department, uh, play into that or code or?
For, no, no.
Since we have code.
These aren't, these aren't building codes, the, and maybe that's where the confusion comes from. We're not talking about making modifications to the international building code or, or enforcing those, the building codes that are out there. This is for the code of ordinances itself.
Right.
That run, run the, the city.
Right, that they, that the residents, that we all have to abide by.
Right, and typically, we don't get a lot of input from the building department. Every so often, Mike Bertell will talk to me about some problem he's found in the building codes or would like something tweaked, um, that would be, you know, one of the areas in which there is. One of the largest areas where we're gonna have a code revision coming up here shortly is after the comprehensive plan is done, sooner or later, you're gonna get to a new zoning code. That's gonna require the work of all ten of you, absolutely, and me and Noel and a whole bunch of consultants and a whole bunch of other stuff. That's the kinda thing that this committee is really well structured to do.
Your honor? Uh, Alderman Mozeo?
A couple of things. Um, in, in my time up here, maybe corporation council, the committees are really just a filter to get the recommendation to the city council. At the end of the day, the only thing that matters is to vote on the council floor, am I right on? A, a committee could vote at zero to five and it, and it could come to the council and it could pass.
And they have done that.
Yes, so the, the, the committee is just a filter, uh, another way to hash out some things and get more input and questions, um, and the way city council meetings have been going lately, the committee meeting, there's much more discussion during committee meetings than there is, uh, during, uh, city council meetings. Uh, in my earlier years, it was the other way around, committee meetings weren't always discussed as much, it was more discussed on the council, but at the end of the day, it's what happens up here when the nine of us vote on something.
That's correct.
It's just a filter. You could make up any committee you wanted to make, I mean, I remember this, this whole hubbub about the Economic Development Committee, that was created by Mayor Zabangin and he said, "Well, you chair it," I said, "Sure," we did one thing, we got our space going and then I, then it's up to the mayor, they can direct whatever they want to, whatever committee they want. We put parking in judiciary sometimes because the police have said, "Hey, uh, we, we didn't get it on the public safety agenda, can we put it on judiciary?" Yeah. I mean, so it, at, at the end of the day, it's what the nine people up here decide on any certain item. Am I correct on that, counselor?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alderman Florian, are there any more questions, ma'am? Okay. But I do appreciate Alderman Florian, Alderman Rivera, Alderman Kirkwood and Alderman Turner. Hey, these are good questions. This is what bridges a strong, united front as how we're gonna move the city. And, uh, I just said, keep asking privately, publicly, it doesn't, it, it only helps us to get a better understanding of what we wanna do and where we're at. All right, did we vote on that?
Not yet.
Not yet.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman, uh, Mozeo, second by Alderman Kirkwood to approve as presented resolution of the officials' video recording and public posting of committee meetings of the city council in the city of Waukegan. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Newsom to approve as presented ordinance extending the moratorium on single-room occupancy units. Any questions to the motion? Uh, just, uh, I'm, I'm, uh.
Why is there a moratorium?
Bob, can you explain that? This is an extended mora- I should've said extended, ordinance extending moratorium. Bob, help us out for?
Sure, happy to do that, Mayor, thank you. The moratorium has been in place for about a hundred and eighty days on the, the, uh, the idea of regulating SROs. We've come up with some ideas in staff, of course, there was a major change with the, uh, composition of the city council with between retirements and, uh, the turnover due to elections and what we, we're at a, at a point where I think we'd like to take some time in the next month or so and explain to you, Alderman, exactly what it is that , uh, staff and, uh, legal have come up with as far as a proposed scheme for, uh, regulating at the single-room occupancy hotels, uh, kinda situation and to come up with a comprehensive ordinance, it's gonna take a little bit of time because we've gotta get your, uh, bring you up to speed on what we've done and get some feedback from you on what you might like to see and that, uh, so we figure ninety days will give us enough time to get a final product in place that you can vote up or down when the time comes.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Turner to approve as presented resolution authorizing intergovernment agreement to coordinate and follow ambient air sampling for ethylene oxide between the city, between the County of Lake, city of Waukegan, Village of Gurnee, including funding not to exceed fifty thousand from line item one hundred, seven, one, two, nine, two, four, four, three, five. Are there any questions to the motion?
Not a question, I just a, a comment. I think the, the night we decided to do this, I told people that the wheels of government turn sort of slowly, you see how long it took us to do that? I can't thank the Burnett's enough for their hard work and contrary to popular belief, everybody up here doesn't know everything, so sometimes you have to reach out to the general public to get answers and, uh, I've learned one thing in my lifetime here is, uh, you get talent as a coach, go get talent and these two people are very talented in what they do and they know a lot about it, um, and I can't thank them enough to get this ball rolling, um, and the way they've gone about it, uh, to me is the perfect example of how government works and how they've, uh, they've asked the government, the city to, uh, to, what's the word I'm looking for, I don't know, I'm a loss of words, but, but they've asked the city to, to look into this and, uh, I think we're, we're on our way. Thank you.
Mayor? Alderman Kirkwood.
I think it's also important that we remember that this meeting coming up, we need our residents to be present so that we can get more information of where we are. Uh, it's excellent that we have people that are giving us good information, but we need to get that information for ourselves so we can have a better understanding of what is really going on in our community, Mayor.
Before, I'm sorry, my, my mind is.
Alderman Mozeo.
And, and the whole purpose of this, in my mind, was to get evidence because if you're gonna go to the EPA, you're gonna go to the feds, you better have evidence and then they can't, they can't, can't come back and say, "Oh, uh, uh, this is so we have evidence." I'm, kinda go to court, lawyer, tell us that, you better have some evidence, you can't just go in there with, you know.
Aggravation.
Whatever, so this is so that we have evidence.
All right, and to add to that, uh, first of all, let's, uh, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, just letting everybody know, let everybody know, the city of Gurnee is having their council meeting tonight and they're doing the same thing as we are as we speak. So, to Alderman's, Mozeo's point, uh, the, this is, is probably one of the best examples where government legislators in the public band together to come up with a solution that can help our, the frontline community, so kudos and in here with us tonight is Larry, Larry from Lake County Health Department, who along with, uh, Tom and our, and my office was really doing a lot of the back, the, they call the backstory, they were doing a lot of the moving parts of getting everybody together, so Larry, stand up, I wanna thank you, man, for being part of this. He made all the phone calls of the different, different people trying to get him and, uh, Mark, so kudos and Mark is at, uh, Gurnee's building and, uh, Gurnee's, uh, council and you're here with us. Thank you again, man, we move forward. All right, motion, uh, motion by Rivera, second by, by Alderman, going to approve resolution amendment to city travel policy, any questions to the motion?
Question.
Qu-?
What, what, that's, that's really vague for an amendment of a, of a policy, so can we have an explanation of what the policy is, what's, and what the change is, et cetera? I, uh, and I apologize, normally I, I would've liked to have looked it up with my, technical guys always have technical problems, right? So, I couldn't open the, uh, document attached and if you just give me a short, what form, please?
Sure, it, really what this does, uh, we have currently a policy, a, a policy that is designed to, for a smaller village, one that has relatively smaller, uh, fewer travel pieces. What it, uh, what it suggests is that each time that travel comes up, it has to be approved by, uh, what was then the Labor Relations Committee.
Hmm.
What this does is it shifts the burden to the department heads and to the mayor to approve the travel and then to report after the fact so that you have a little more flexibility in making sure that people can get to the, um, you know, the seminars and the training seminar and training situations to, uh, uh, to go to conferences, things of that nature that can improve your city without having to try to seek approval on a one-one-one-one basis as it goes along. This way, you can, you will still set the travel budgets and the departments will be responsible for staying within those budgets and if they run over them, they'll have to come back and explain to you why they blew all the dough that you gave them.
(laughing).
Uh, so you still have the, the actual, uh, dollar incentive control over it that way, but you won't have, uh, have to weigh in each time somebody wants to send somebody to Chicago or to Milwaukee for that matter?
Makes sense, Bob, thank you very much.
Mayor, if I could, maybe I'll clear it up. It, it would be, it'd be like this, so the mayor goes someplace, somebody, uh, says and he's approved, uh, whatever travel it is, uh, somebody says, you know, "We can stay over, you can meet with, with the congressman, you, you can be on a panel, you can be something tomorrow," that's not really approved, so it's, it's back, it's back done, okay? That's how we, that's how we do it now. So, the difference would be is that he would have this travel, if it was extended, it's extended by whatever department, whether that's the fire department, police department, and the big thing is IT, uh, IT education that we have to send people a lot of places to try to keep, keep up with the IT and how to, how to repair. So, this ha- this happens fairly frequently where they go and the day has to be extended, so even though it's approved through the city council of how many days, how much money, it's extended. It, it, it happens fairly regularly, so this is, this is going to, uh, uh, correct that.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Aldman, Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion by Alderman Seager, second by the Mozeo to approve as presented resolution authorizing mayor to acquire certain properties from County of Lake via tax sale. Before you go, I noticed some questions on that. Bob, can you explain how that, uh, what that process was, please?
Sure, what we were doing, and this arose out of an initiative to try to do, uh, utilize demolition funds in the building department and find a way to do it most efficiently. So, we would identify properties that have, uh, problem houses on it, rundown buildings that aren't being properly maintained that are in need of demolition. Traditionally, we would file demolition lawsuits, expend funds for service, serving papers, uh, getting, uh, doing all sorts of stuff with lawyers and the rest of the, and we found that in, uh, the county has a list of properties that we could cross-index and they, uh, they were in the process of getting tax deeds on them, so what we have done is identified the properties that are listed here, I think there's about eight or nine of them, uh, which we can acquire from the county at no, essentially no charge or very small charges and that way we will avoid all of the expenses of the, uh, of acquiring the title to the property so that we can do the demolitions and also avoid the risk. There was a, an issue a few years back under the, under some prior attorneys that, uh, a prior administration that, uh, authorized the demolition of a house, unfortunately, we didn't really have the right to demolish the house and because there were some errors in the processing of the complaint, at least there were allegations of that, and the city ended up having to, uh, compensate the property owner for doing that. By taking title in this fashion, we are assured that that will never happen and that we can go ahead, do the demolitions and then figure out ways to repurpose the properties, whether it's turn it over to something like Handi, uh, like Habitat for Humanity that, uh, or s-, uh, perhaps assemble enough properties to do, um, large parcel assemblies so that we can find priv- private investors that would be interested in redeveloping whole areas, but that'll give you the flexibility to do it for next to nothing.
We have, uh, Alderman Newsom and Alderman Mozeo, Alderman Newsom?
We have four.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see you finish.
Four, four properties that don't have a actual address, um.
Right.
Lots.
Yeah, they are, they're lots.
They're lots and, and from the lot standpoint, they're sit there, sit there, we pay to cut them, pay to cut them, or what we're trying to do now is get them off of that county adjacent to that property who's closest to it and let them be responsible or get it back on the tax roll, so that's when you have those. And at, at the end of the day, they still problem child's force. Any more questions?
Your honor?
All right, uh, we got Alderman Mozeo then Alderman Rivera, Alderman Mozeo.
Hopefully this will dovetail and I had a meeting with Noel, um, and I sit on the CPAP board, which used to be the Affordable Housing and it's alphabet soup, but, um, and we had a meeting with their director and the president of the board, he used to be the president, but, uh, the faulty idea that the city, especially these, these single, these single lots, uh, this group has done a great job in Round Lake and in Mundaline and in North Chicago, it's doing a development in North Chicago right now for affordable housing, uh, where they get land, they develop it and then they sell it. One of my biggest fears, though, is, not from this group, but from anybody else would be if we did this and we sell land, we sell it to a private investor, sell it to somebody, they may just sit on it and not do anything. The, the people I'm talking about, CMAP or CPAP, what, Noel, what is it, that?
CPAP, you see the President's Board of Corporate Actors?
Yeah, he was on the board and I can't even get the damn thing right because it's got alphabet soup, but anyway, with them, we, we, this land we'd have, we would negotiate something with them, we would know what they're gonna do, they would put an actual house on it, they're gonna, they have a development in North Chicago, it's gonna be done relatively soon, so when that gets done, I'd like to bring the council there, show them, this is what we could do with a lot of these little single lots that we have and get them back on the tax rolls. So, hopefully that, this is a, this is a good way to dovetail that in, um, and like I said, when they get that North Chicago thing going, we should go down there and look at it and then go from there. It's a way to get, again, reinvest in the neighborhoods, get single lots with a nice house on it, affordable and back on the tax rolls. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Um, yeah, I just had a question regarding the, the cost of the purchase, um, you indicated that these, uh, properties were, uh, from tax sales?
Yes.
Okay, um, so would, we have to, no?
No, the, in this particular instance, the county was the, uh, received no bidders, No, in this particular instance, the county was, received no betters. So, the tax sale they're talking about is turning it, is going to tax deed and then turning it over to us, eliminating all the tax, all the back taxes.
Eliminating the, okay.
So, you know, theoretically, I think they, we give them a check for $10 a property, something like that. That's, you know, essentially meaningless cost, but very low cost.
Thank you.
Any other question? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Mozeo, second by Alderman Kirkwood to approve as presented resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement between the City of Waukegan and the Waukegan Port District for the purchase, management, operation, and maintenance of airport rescue and firefighting truck. Any questions? All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Item I, motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Newsom to adopt as presented orders amending chapter three of the Code of Ordinances by creating a subclass A4, A- dash four, uh-oh. Second by Alderman Turner. Alderman Turner, A4 liquor license for seasonal beach liquor sales. Questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Turner to adopt as presented orders amending chapter 21, limited parking one hour except by permit, by repealing the limited parking one hour except by permit, Lincoln Street, both sides, where the residence company known as 530, 531 Lincoln Street, south of 170 feet, except for non-commercial residential vehicles displaying permits or place cards issued by the City of Waukegan. Questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozeo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Closing items, Alderman's time. Before we go there, Alderman, do not leave. We have some kids who must get something signed saying they attended the Waukegan City Council. Raise your hands, high school kids. Where are you? There you go. All right, then. Make it fast. Make it fast. All right. Madam Clerk, Alderman's time.
Alderman Seager.
Pass.
Alderman Mozeo.
I talked enough fast.
Alderman Kirkwood.
I have two announcements. There will be a ward meeting in the fourth ward on next Tuesday, May the 28th, here at the City Council chambers, from 6:00 to 7:00. Refreshments will be served at 5:30 in the outer lobby area. Also, I want to encourage all the residents of Waukegan to attend Whittier School on May 23rd, this Thursday, at 6:30, so we can learn more about the ethylene oxide.
That's it.
Alderman Newsom.
I would just like to echo Alderman Kirkwood regarding Whittier School. I might be a little late because I have to do a presentation at the high school, but I do plan to attend. And I want to thank you for always bringing updated information to us where we may not be able to go to some of the other meetings to hear what you have. So, I appreciate you bringing all the updated information to us. Thank you.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you. So, there are a number of initiatives and activities that are either underway or being planned for the sixth ward, excuse me, for the sixth ward residents. If you have any sidewalks that need repair or tree stumps that need to be removed from the parkway or dangerous trees that are growing in the park with their overhanging branches, excuse me, or dead trees that need attention, please bring those to my attention. I'm going to put dumpsters out in the sixth ward on the following dates, and there'll be flyers distributed with this information as well as announcements made on social media. On June 8th, in the 1,700 block of Walnut underneath the Combiad power lines, we have a dumpster out there from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. On June 22nd, we'll be at, we'll have a dumpster at 1209 Chestnut. That's adjacent to the video rental, Papa Marco's Pizza or Marco's Pizza and the video rental place. And then on August, excuse me, August 17th, we'll have a dumpster in front of North School and be on the street, on Franklin Street at North School. That's August 17th. And again, the times will be from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. On June 27th, we'll have a sixth ward meeting here in City Hall that will run from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Again, that's June 27th, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at City Hall. Additionally, are, as I mentioned, other initiatives and activities being planned. I've had a lot of comments and complaints about speeding cars, blowing stop signs, a lot of issues with potholes. All of those things are either going to be addressed or being addressed or will be addressed shortly. So, don't hesitate to call me. In fact, I encourage you to call me or email me. My phone number is 847-445-3788, and my official Waukegan email is keith.turner@waukeganil.gov. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Pass.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to set a record here. I've only been in office two weeks, and I have to issue an apology already. When I got sworn in, I promised I was going to do two cleanups, and I found out I couldn't do them both at the same time. So, Heather Heights, I'm coming. We'll plan for you. We did have the cleanup up in Castle Crest this past Saturday morning. Thank you, Public Works, for making that happen, especially Tori Moreship and Damon Washington, who were there with the dumpster for me that morning. And then in the afternoon, I met with a few residents in the rain to pick up trash. I think it went really well. I think the ward, that part of the ward looks much better. It's one of the older parts of my ward, so I'm really glad we were able to do that. And I look forward to planning one in Heather Heights when Keith's done with all the dumpsters in the sixth ward, it sounds like. I want to remind everyone now that tax bills are coming out. To look at them closely, I know mine went up $157, but remember that the city and villages only get 9% of your tax bills. Schools get 69%. So, go to those school board meetings and make sure that they're spending your money wisely there also. I want to echo the encouragement by my fellow aldermen to attend the meeting on Thursday. I was excited that one of the first things I got to vote on was the funding for the ETO testing, and I look forward to us following through on that. And one last thing I want to remind everyone, my ward meeting is June 20th at 6:00 PM right here in City Hall. So, thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Real quick, Alderman, advance disposal will be replacing all of the old BFI, Viola, whatever other name out there besides advance dumpster. They started that this last week. They're on the southern part of the city, and they're going to be moving, they're going to be moving north. So, other than that, motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Kirkwood to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Thank you.